All right. Call this meeting to order at six thirty-two P M. As always, we begin with public input. If there's anybody, any members of the public who want to be heard. I see nobody. We move on. Student report. Cassandra Fitz.
I just heard a.
Is there somebody? Is there a ding? Oh, okay. I can't see. Go ahead. Nikki, say your name. Please unmute. Say your name and address and go ahead.
Hi, Nikki. Nikki Tuesday, read out the links. And I just have a couple of questions in regard to the twenty twenty-five plan. Where are we with the updates on the bathroom? If we can have a review on that as well as who are the district stakeholders in that? And how much of our budget has been already spent and will be spent for the updated bathrooms?
So I will say upfront that public input is to ask, is to be heard. It doesn't necessarily mean we can respond, but when there are questions, sometimes we're able to do it. So Dr. Daly, do you have any information you can share?
So the, um, there's not really updated bathrooms. There's just gender restrooms that are available at all schools, and that's already been done. There's no, there was no cost to that. There was a small cost for signage, but there's no cost to that. The stakeholders for N R P S twenty twenty-five, is that the question?
Yes.
I would say the stakeholders are everyone in the school community. So families, students, staff, administration, community members at large. Everybody in the community was in the newspaper, was sent out widely to get input on the visioning piece two years ago and last year as well as we went through the plan. And was there a third question? I forget.
Alyssa, so that you already answered it. Do you know what does the bathroom signage look like?
Bathroom signage? I can send you a picture if you send me an email, but it says all gender restroom, and it's a picture of, these are for single-use bathrooms. And so it's just a picture of, I believe, someone in a wheelchair. It just says all gender restroom, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a particular concern or?
Um, yeah, I just, you know, I wanted to make sure that it was a single-use. You know, I've got children who are in the school district, and as they grow up, I just want to make sure that they are protected.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's just, yeah, that's one option for students, staff, visitors. Anyone that wants to use that room can use that room. And then we have other protections under the law as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tosi. Okay, moving on to the student report. We have Cassandra Fitz here, class of twenty twenty-four.
Uh, so there was a change.
Oh, no, we don't.
Piper Kerwin here.
Okay, we have a Piper here instead.
Sorry about that.
Are you twenty twenty-four? What year are you? Okay.
Um, hi, everybody.
What's happened today? Sorry about that.
Um, for notable academic matters, National Honor Society acceptance letters were just sent out a few days ago and the start of the fourth quarter started today. For notable fine arts matters, the district art show is on display until April twenty-third out in Main Street. The all-town band concert is on April eleventh in the high school gym. And beautiful burnout, the maskers, um, uh, yeah, N R H S maskers, beautiful burnout, won state finals on April first. For notable athletic matters, softball plays Penn Tucket tonight. Girls and boys lacrosse also play Penn Tucket tonight. Boys and girls tennis have matches against Newburyport tonight. Baseball is currently one and oh. Boys lacrosse is currently oh and three. Girls lacrosse is two and one. Softball is one and oh, and boys tennis is one and oh, and girls tennis is oh and one. As far as games go this season, seniors are still having a science fundraiser. April break is coming up on this Friday. N R H S is hosting a N E M A S C student government conference, and junior prom was last Friday. As far as my student work report, I wanted to show my A P L annotated bibliography. So A P L's in like advanced placement English language, and we're doing a annotated big bibliography for the New York Times, which is a competition that they host every year. And students get to pick a topic that's something that they're passionate about, passionate about that like could be considered controversial, and they get to argue it and write an editorial, and then you submit it to the New York Times. It's a competition, and then the winner gets published like in the actual newspaper. So I have my annotated bibliography with all of my sources. My topic is should arts curriculum like be funded in schools or continue to be funded in schools? And so I have seven sources that for our next assignment, which is to write the actual editorial and submit it to the New York Times.
What is your position on that?
Um, I'm arguing that they should be.
And are you part of Beautiful Burnout?
I am, yeah.
So congratulations to Beautiful Burnout.
Thank you.
That's impressive. I mean, anytime that anything is won at a state level is just impressive. So congratulations on that one and.
And so many great individual awards too that came out of that. It's a great showing.
Yeah. I think softball won four to three because Joaquin was a softball player, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I saw Penn Tucket going to their bus looking not so happy.
So any other comments, questions?
I was briefly at the reception for the art show, beginning of the art show last week, and just tremendous work there and great kudos to the students, of course, but also to Jesse O'Brien and Andy Dexter for all the work they've done as curriculum leaders in the arts, in the fine arts. And the work you see there is great. It's a lot of fun.
It's really good.
Some impressive stuff, even from little, little ones.
Even at all, at all levels, it's really amazing, including some really stunning, a couple of really stunning things.
Yeah. And the all-town chorus last week was really nice, too.
Astonishing.
They've done that, and it's nice to see.
We have all-town band coming up.
Yeah.
Six thirty, different stuff there. And the band also, I forgot to mention this today when we met, the band went to a Michael concert, and for the first time, it came away with a silver medal.
Great.
Really good, too.
Just three stars.
I'll say that in addition to lots of parents and others there, Mr. LePret and Mr. Colleen and myself and Mr. Connolly were able to go see Beautiful Burnout at the state competition. It really, well, well-deserving of the awards. I mean, it's just everything from just the setup to the stage crew, the effects, the technology, the fact that they all learned accents, that they all were trained how to box. It was really, really impressive show. So much goes into that for so long, and it's really quite an honor. So you should be very proud.
Thank you.
Is there anything beyond states or?
Um, there's a New England competition, which is all the states, but it's in, it's up in Maine. But I don't think we're gonna participate this year because we don't have enough attendance because people are going to Japan and just not enough practice time, but yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As always, you can stay as long as you want or leave. We won't be offended, so. We got a huge crowd here for tonight, so I'm sure everybody's here on the animal policy, right? I think we'll go to core measurement survey first. If you wanna bring up Amy. Not gonna see enough of her on Wednesday, so we'll have to have her here today, too.
Thank you. I am short. Hello, everybody. I haven't seen you in a year. Well, some of you more recently, but officially, I haven't seen you in a year. The last time I came here and did this presentation was online from my kitchen. So it's good to see you guys. I'm Amy Luckowitz. I oversee our Drug-Free Communities Grant for the Community Impact Team. Dr. Daly is also part of that leadership team, and I work over in the North Reading Police Department. And each year, we come to you looking for your permission to get some data from the students in grades six through twelve. And if you can believe this, we are as effective, April first, we are halfway through our year seven. So seven years, that time flew by. We have a ten-year grant and coming up quickly. So I'm going to share some information about anticipation of the presentation, excuse me, of the survey. If you need copies of that, I think everybody has them. I do, I did bring them. If the public would like copies of that as well, I'm happy to give that to you. So our goals are to learn and understand the use and perceptions of risk associated with alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, prescription drugs. And the feds actually loop in vaping with tobacco use. So for purposes of North Reading information, we like to separate vaping out into its own category because it has its own behaviors around that and perceptions as well. So we're required to collect information for our federal grant around the first four. We do it around the five. We also look to identify trends in use and attitudes, and we do have to fulfill our D F C grant. Specifically, we have to ask four questions about those four. We do five substances. So we ask the kids about past thirty-day use, their perception of peer approval, their perception of parent approval, and their perception of risk or harm. An example of that is a trend that related to the legalization of marijuana, the decriminalization of marijuana. The kids actually think it's more safe because it's now legal. And with the perception of it being more safe, we have seen an increase of use, things like that. And that's statewide. So just two notable changes since the last time we collected this last spring. We added in a question related to gambling. Another situation of behaviors and attitudes related to potentially addictive behavior. This is actually to set a baseline. As you know, sports gambling became legal, and we would like to have this number collected as early as possible so that we can track that over time and see if it does have an impact on students. Per my discussion with Dr. Daly, our anticipation is to kind of collect initial information and then see if we need to extrapolate more detailed information, like if they're using online sources, if they're using fake accounts, things like that, as we go forward and kind of identify that. Unfortunately, we have a new trend related to nicotine use, and that's the nicotine pouches. Some brand names are called Velo, Zin, Drift, and we'll be asking students about that again to kind of identify those trends as well. Nicotine has a very persistent marketing strategy, and every time we fight something, especially related to vaping, something else pops up, so. We do have an administration plan. Thank you to Dr. O'Connell and Mr. LePret. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grades are all going to take the survey in homeroom. Grades nine and ten will take it in health class or P E, and eleventh and twelfth will be taking it in power block. Generally speaking, everything should be done by the end of May. One of the requests that I have is that it not be done within thirty days of a prom because that can affect past thirty-day use of something, especially if the kids are trying to experiment around that time at home or at a party or something outside of the event. We'll be using Survey Monkey again for digital collection. The students will be given a link and a Q R code to make it as easy as possible. As always, parents can opt out. Students can skip questions and stop or start the survey. They can also decide to just stop taking it together at any point. The survey for both sets is going to take approximately eight minutes according to Survey Monkey. I love that they have that prediction availability. And educators are provided scripts on how to introduce a survey. In that script is also included an explanation of what the word anonymous means, as well as reminding the students that they can start, stop, skip questions. So one of the questions that I get asked all the time is what do we do with the data? As I mentioned, we report it federally to the, related to our D F C grant, Drug-Free Communities Grant. We do make the summary data public via our website, the town's website. So if you'd like to see that, you can visit northreadingma.gov/cit and click on data. You'll see all past reports related to that. It is summary data, so it doesn't address every single question. We share it with stakeholders in the community, like you folks. We also share it with teachers, especially health teachers. But my favorite part is sharing it with the kids. So I wanted to give you an example of how we share that information with the students. A good example is Ms. Morey's class, when we go to visit her for talking to the eighth grade about alcohol use. We like to myth-bust with the kids. We don't like to lecture them. So we do a little game with them about what they think using color-coded cards. So green is yes, pink is no, and I don't know is yellow. And we, the question is, most kids in high school use alcohol. And almost every time to this question, the kids give us a green. They think every kid in high school uses alcohol. So remember this eighth-grade perception, right? So then we show them the actual data, and we say, well, did you know that actually most kids in high school don't use? So why do we think that's the case? Well, we think about it because it's a problem, and when something's a problem, we shine a light on it, and the adults get really anxious about it. We talk about it a lot. So we talk to the kids about that sort of stuff, and that's how we share the data. One of the important messages that we can give kids as opposed to lecturing them is to show them real facts. They don't like being tricked, and we like to myth-bust that way. So just because I haven't seen you in a while, I did want to give you a little chart related to the past several years. Little uptick in vape use, little uptick in prescription drugs not prescribed to them. But I was pretty happy to see marijuana use go down because we really targeted that. Alcohol continues to be our major focus in town overall. We have identified a, what's considered a casual attitude related to alcohol use. So that could look like something like parents saying it's okay to use in the home as long as I take your keys, or it's okay to use in the home as long as I'm using with you. Those are ideas related to a casual attitude about alcohol. And I'll show you some numbers, North Reading related to the country on that in a second. I always like to share this, especially when it comes to vaping. And I know a lot of attention gets put on vaping use in the bathrooms at school, that everything is happening in the bathrooms at school. But as we ask the kids, we can see that the number one place is at a friend's home, and the number two place is at home. So yes, I absolutely think we should identify locations, but we really need to ask the parents to be collaborators on this and making sure that we kind of keep an eye on what's going on at home and at a friend's house when kids are unsupervised. Mixed bag here. The age of first use. This is really important because we know that the younger child uses substances, the more likely they are to have, develop addiction, as well as the more severe health-related consequences associated with that substance. I'm happy to see tobacco, some other green things go up. That means green is it went older over the past year. That's what we want. We want that number actually to be around twenty-six, which we couldn't get with these high school students, obviously. Twenty-six is the oldest age in which our brain stops developing, which, by the way, we talked to the kids about that as well. So hypothetically, if we were to base our laws on science, the age of use should be in the twenties, not eighteen or twenty-one. But we did see some younger, specifically around vaping nicotine and marijuana. Fourteen is obviously very, very young, and it's a very, um, it's sad to see. But I do want to just caution everybody that that question is related to those very few kids who identified they used, if that makes sense. And that number was very low. So I'm not panicking yet about that. Of course.
Does the survey specify abuse of R X as opposed to like I'm on a prescription?
Yes, it says, I'm using prescription drugs not prescribed to me. That's how the phrasing is nationally. Yep. I do think that that can be a confusing question in general, though, but that's the guidance from the feds on that question. I also believe it's the way that the Y R B S raises that question, too. Um, so I always get asked about this, too. Where does North Reading stand versus national use? I just want to point out that this is versus a two thousand twenty-one study because at the time of creating the slide, the twenty-two numbers hadn't come out yet. So you can see, generally speaking, North Reading does better. I'll also mention that the report for monitoring the future study only goes to even grades. That's why you're not seeing all of them. But in alcohol, tenth grade is a little bit higher than the national average as well as the twelfth grade drugs, prescription drugs, excuse me. So as always, I like to end on offering things. And a couple of things of note coming up. Our D E A Drug Takeback Day is going to be April twenty-second. It is free for anybody in the community, beyond the community. We'll take anybody from anywhere to drop off your unused prescription drugs. Get them out of your home, make them more safe. We will also take pet medication. Drive by the O'Larry Senior Center. I'll have two detectives out there dropping them in, and you would be shocked to learn that we've taken over two thousand pounds of unused prescription drugs since we started this program. That's a lot. We have people who drop off entire bags, especially if they have a passing due to cancer or something like that where pain medication is likely to be in the home. Ongoing throughout the year, we also provide community naloxone or Narcan training. Very, very important statistically speaking. Some of us will cross paths with somebody who is abusing fentanyl or heroin. They think it's heroin. It's actually fentanyl. We like to explain Narcan is just like carrying a pocket mask for CPR. Once you know how to do it, it's very easy to save somebody's life. We have those community trainings throughout the year. If you go on the C I T website, I already scheduled them out. So I wanted to let everybody know about that as well. What do you need to know?
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
Questions, comments?
I'll throw a few in. Do you have a bunch of?
Uh, you go first.
Well, I'm still thinking about it.
Couple of comments, questions. Let me first, thank you very much, Amy, for coming. We appreciate having you, and, you know, and I know you were part of Family University as well, and you give a lot, lots to the school, so we really appreciate that. My question is. Some of the questions were still about sleep in the survey. I know some of that was, we were also looking at changing start times in the past as we're adding things about gambling and other things. I mean, is there any indication that should we remove those questions? Just because there were a few of them on sleep, and I'm just wondering what the purpose of those are going forward.
So those, one of the nice things is she gives us the ability to add a few questions. So those are questions we've kept in. We want to compare the baseline now. Since we've changed the start times, it's not gonna, one-year data is gonna be one-year data, but we'd like to see an improvement in some of the questions related to, are you, are you tired at school? Like, we should start to see some improvements there. So we elected to keep those in, and they're the same questions, so we can compare.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it'll be hard with the COVID, too, especially when they were, kids were home. But, and then the only other, the comment would just be on, I'm glad you added gambling in because I do think that's probably, we're gonna, we're gonna see huge addictions in the future because I just feel like with gambling, everything could just be done from your phone, and so you don't have to talk to anybody, you don't have to go get anything in addition to many other things, and talk about what's accepted, what's not. I mean, every single sports team is sponsored by gambling. I mean, you watch it on T V, and they have the lines on there, and it's, yeah. So I do think it's smart to start a baseline.
Unlike the other things, there's no, there's no limits on advertising. It's, if you watch a sports event right now, it's, it's all gambling, gambling-related.
I know that some of the C D C Center for Addiction Prevention is looking very strongly at that particular topic. I don't have any resources right now from that, but I suspect they'll be coming out with them soon. They've always had like baseline stuff, but now we're gonna have to have some data related to it.
I mean, again, the only other thing I would say, like, I wonder, I don't think,
I don't know if anything in our policy subcommittee has to do with gambling in school at all, but.
Not that I've seen.
I mean, you know, they don't have their cell phones. They don't have cell phones. I guess it's, but they do have cell phones in high school. We should think about.
State law prohibits by age anyway.
Yeah, it is.
So.
Would be against the law.
We'd definitely be against the handbook, digital.
Correct.
Responsible use.
Just want to make sure that if we have to, we have to update anything to add in gambling now that it's legal in the state.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we should, again, if there's any restrictions on.
Might be something to emphasize, but it's not.
Yeah.
It's still state law, and it's still, that hasn't changed for.
Just thinking. Okay, go ahead. Right, sorry.
I was just gonna ask, um, how, how many, you get a lot of opt-outs from parents from the survey?
As far as I know, no, but I don't have the exact numbers. I know Dr. O'Connell's here.
Yeah, what's the percentage, ten percent?
Total?
That's not, not nothing.
Yeah, we had more, I think, the last time than we've ever had. It's usually, isn't it usually like five or ten? And then we had percent, we had a percentage last time. And I think there was just a lot of, at that time, there was just also a lot of pushback on anything extra, right? So I think it might be different this year. We'll see. But we, everything's available for people to review and make those decisions. It's not, not required, yeah.
So I just a little bit piggyback on what Scott was saying about the, with the gambling and always having a device. I noticed, and I may have missed it, but you have a few questions on social media and like, have you ever been embarrassed by something? But I, I mean, would you find it useful to include information on hours spent on social media and maybe correlation with mental health, wellness, how people are feeling? Because I think that's becoming a really clear link. And I don't know what you, again, would do with that information except for to say, we took this survey last year, and we found the kids that spent five-plus hours a day on social media were feeling this way, and the people that spent less time. I mean, who knows? It would be interesting information.
I, that's exactly it. It'd be interesting information. My scope is really specifically related to addiction.
Right.
Or substances. Gambling is a little bit of a stretch for you to use.
So this makes it a further stretch.
Well, no, but that's okay. Like, that's, we have partnerships available. Like, that's something that Dr. Daly could be like, hey, I think that's a great idea. Let's add that in.
It's a bad one.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. Yeah, this is not Amy's survey. This is whatever is best for the school to give them as much information as we possibly can on health and climate.
Right.
And that's kind of what that gets to. I think it is interesting.
I would think there's some more tie-in than maybe we think with, you know, who knows? With some of the other behaviors and things like that.
Given the data that you have and the breadth of data you have and the longevity of it, what would you recommend for us in terms of where you would want us to either change focus or double down on something that we're, maybe we're already doing that's working?
Great question. I think we just had a major shift this year when the detectives in Laura were invited in to do a full presentation on Amy's bunny ears, hard drugs with the kids in the high school. That was a huge shift. We've never been able to do anything on the higher-risk drugs before. But as we start seeing twenty-year-olds start to have more challenges related to that, the earlier, this is upstream prevention, right? Getting them in high school. The fact that we were allowed to talk to them at the freshman level, that was huge. And a big partner of that was the Parent Association. They came to us and said, I think we need this. Can you do it? Absolutely. So that's, that was a big achievement. Do I think we need to talk about fentanyl in the middle school? No, of course not. The other achievement, though, that I think I will highlight, and this is again the past, this will be year two, we're doing fifth grade anti-vaping curriculum in all of the elementary schools. And that was, again, a huge achievement. As we started to see that number drop to like that fourteen's and all that, we need to get younger and younger and younger. I think fifth grade is appropriate. I wouldn't say that we need to go younger, but those big things happened, and we haven't really seen the benefits of those yet. This is the first year that those fifth graders are gonna take the survey. So I'm gonna be watching that vape number real closely for that sixth-grade class. I don't know if that's helpful, if I have any answer to that.
No, it is. I, well, I think attitudes toward vaping nationally have also changed radically in the last few years. It's gone way up, and now it's sort of turned a little bit, but, um, no, I think it's great information. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I just can't thank enough that, those two big things, I think, were played dividends.
So in terms of what you're looking for, you're looking for an official or unofficial vote for, it looks like it's superintendent approval, so do you just want an unofficial vote from us or do you want an official vote from us?
I think we typically do an unofficial vote to endorse and support it.
Unofficial vote? Anybody opposed to supporting the core measurement survey? I'm not, so I think you have our unofficial recommendation.
Officially, thank you.
No, this is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll be sure to make sure that you have access to the results as usual. You all get first access, actually, before I make them public. And I should have mentioned, too, but we have an outside evaluator get the numbers. I don't, I don't look at them until he gives them to me, just to check. And he does check for margins of error as well as confidence, confidence percentages, which is a new, new thing for me. You're shaking your head. You obviously know about that. Yeah, he looks for both of those things.
Okay.
Statistical accuracy.
Yes, that's a great way to say it. I'm staying that way from now on.
There you go. Thank you, Dr. Daly.
I just want to say thank you for all your support of the community and the students and doing the programs. We've worked well. We've, um, I think we've worked on some of the timing of the meetings, too, to get some more school staff there regularly, and I think that's been a good improvement, so.
Yes, we've had great participation from the school this year in our coalition meetings that are held on Mondays.
Yeah.
It's been wonderful. And I'm sure you told them that you went with us twice to National Coalition Academy, And I don't, I'm sure he did not tell you this, but we were asked how we got a superintendent to attend. If I was paying him on the side, because nobody can get a superintendent or a police chief to attend these sorts of things. Uh, what a shame, because if you don't have top-down or top support, it's really difficult for these small, small communities especially. So thank you for coming, not just once, but twice. That was a big deal. And we graduated, so that was even better.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay. I'll move on to the budget hearing.
Great.
So I will officially open the public budget hearing for 2020, is it 2024?
I, I forget if we need a.
I can just call it, oh, I just, I just open it, right?
I think there's a.
I think there's a vote.
Do I have to do a vote? All right.
I, I will move that we open the, uh, budget hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. We are open. Mr. Connolly. Some principals, some are hiding from us, but.
We've got a new block here, so.
Four of them. And Mr. Simon's joining us.
We may need to, uh, to, uh, rope that section off so people get.
Yeah, I know.
All right, can save it. Dr. McCabe, you can move over right behind the form, I'm just kidding. No, it's all right. Okay. Mr. Connolly.
All right, thank you, Chairman Buckley. So, um, we're gonna start the hearing off with about a 20, 15, 20-minute or so presentation. This is a, we've already done some more thorough detailed presentations, um, previously. So this is kind of meant to be sort of a, a summary, and then we're gonna kind of at the end sort of recap, um, where, where things stand. So we're gonna talk about the budget drivers first and foremost, what's at play with development of the fiscal year 24 budget, what are the, the major drivers? We'll get into the numbers and start to break down some of the administrative and school committee's priorities in developing the budget. We'll talk staffing positions and our strategic plan, what are some of the, the priorities and the new staffing positions being requested. We'll talk a little bit about offsets tonight, and we've covered it a lot in the past, um, in terms of what is, what are the federal and state grants and, and budget subsidies? And what's being covered by some of the revolving, um, funds, where we do assess a use of fee and, or a tuition cost. So we'll touch upon that, and then we'll talk about where we stand with the community and the revenue plan um, to fund both municipal and school budgets and what the current school budget gap is. The administration, um, which several have joined us this evening to help answer questions at the end of the hearing, as well as the school committee have been kind of hard at work in looking at creative ways to sort of, um, deal with the budget challenges. And there's no secret that we're kind of always here at this point. Is, there's a structural just deficit in funding school and municipal budgets. The reality of the situation is, is that the, the expenses and fixed costs to fund certain things like benefits and, and other areas in the community for, for staff in both the municipal and school side generally rise higher than revenue. So when you start the process of developing a municipal or school budget, you're already starting at what sometimes can be referred to as sort of the structural deficit. That's not a North Reading issue. Um, that is a, a, um, really national and state issue from the macro level. When you look at certain things like Proposition 2 and a half, um, and that's, that's some of the challenges that we face on an annual basis. So if we get into the budget drivers, um, four main budget drivers in this year. And again, this, this pendulum has not moved a lot in the last several years. When we talk about funding a school budget, we're essentially, the largest driver of a school budget is always gonna be your contractual salary obligations. And that's because we invest mostly in personnel. And we have 83% of our school budget is, is, is personnel or, or salaries. That is going to be a very common statistic, um, in any municipal or school budget. So that's gonna be the biggest driver. We obviously want to invest in maintaining high-quality, um, staffing positions, both from certainly the educators and the professional staff and the support staff and administrators. So there's a cost to, 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 um, maintaining staff and obviously cost of living adjustments and so forth for that staff. So that's, that is a big, big driver of, of the school budget and that, that will always be the case. Um, our operational fixed costs, the district has many, what we refer to as fixed cost increases to, that do present, um, challenges at times. I believe, and I've said it before, that I think we do a very good, solid job of controlling our, our operational costs. Um, and we always want to do that, and we always want to look for creative ways and measures to control these costs from a building, uh, perspective. Lot of this is the building maintenance piece to maintain our, our, our four, our five schools and four campuses, um, as well as, um, the cost of doing business to provide certainly adequate transportation, maintain utilities. Um, we have a wastewater treatment facility that we upkeep and maintain on this campus, the middle school and the high school. So there's a lot of, of operations that go into running a, the school department. When you look at our four schools and our, our campuses, there's landscaping, there's grounds cost, there's snow and ice. These costs generally don't get cheaper, so there's, there's always gonna be a, an increase to that that we're dealing with. And our due diligence and our vigilance with our daily operations and everything that we've tried to do uh, historically with investing in LED lights and looking at solar costs, which we continue to do. And Chairman Buckley has been, uh, driving that and looking at all, all areas of savings. Modulating boilers, um, setting your occupancy schedules, all these areas that we've looked at to try to reduce our operational costs and, and, and control that. And I think you've done a pretty good job with that. But that being said, it's, it's certainly a driver of the school budget. Um, N R P S 2025, that is our strategic plan. And we use this document for the school department to guide our, our enhancement requests, how we're gonna continue to drive the school district forward, um, looking at sort of the three key rocks as Dr. Daly would, would, um, uh, phrase it in terms of teaching and learning, student support services, equity. We look at this plan that's put together by the administrative team, supported by the school committee. Dr. Daly mentioned earlier, as a community member, ask a question, and certainly we, we get feedback from all stakeholders during this process of developing that plan. And there are some positions that are guiding our new initiatives, and I'll talk about those a little bit later. Fourth, fourth biggest driver this year, special education costs. Certainly a, a very, um, important aspect of developing an appropriate school department budget. But there are certainly funds needed to both support, um, both out-of-district and in-district students, um, that require special education services. In some cases, these students are educated outside the district, and there's, there's transportation and tuition costs that go along with that. We work, um, again, very closely under the direction of Cynthia Conant, the Director of Student Services and her team, to always look at our, our programs and where appropriate, reallocate resources to the development of programs and, um, when appropriate, educate students. Certainly inside the district is always a, a focus. But certainly, um, there's times when students do get educated outside of North Reading. And this particular year, there, we are seeing an increase in those number, those students that are being educated outside the district in the fiscal year. 24 budget request, um, reflects that. We're also seeing, um, something that is out of our control, and this is a key driver. In every municipality or, uh, city or town, putting together a school budget for fiscal 24 is what's the operational services division with the state does set the private day tuition rates and what can be, um, kind of assessed back to a district. And their increase because of a variety of factors, inflationary increases and everything that they've dealt with over the last number of years, I think, since the pandemic. Their costs have rise, have risen significantly, so some of that cost is being assessed back to, to the districts. And we are seeing, quite honestly, kind of an unprecedented, uh, rate increase, one time, one-year rate increase of 14%. Um, and that's certainly, um, financially, um, a challenge throughout, throughout the state, um, that, that we're, that districts are dealing with. So that is certainly a, a driver of the school department budget this year. When you get into the numbers here, now again, this is our recommended budget, so this is what we've recommended to the school committee. This is this budget that the school committee is, um, certainly been, um, having dialogue on and discussing publicly. This is, um, certainly what we would always refer to as a modified level services budget, meaning it goes a little bit beyond level services because we are looking at not only delivering the same quality of services that we've known to deliver each, you know, previous years and looking at changes in enrollment and staffing when necessary, looking at those changes for operational fixed costs and everything that goes into putting together a budget, but also looking at new enhancements driven by our strategic plan. And that's what is reflected here in the fiscal 24 column. These are the five categories that we've looked at. Um, you can look at a budget in a variety of different ways, but these are kind of the five cost centers, um, what we've, we tend to focus on from a summary perspective. And we are looking, um, or rec, had recommended a budget of $37,768,204. That is a little more than a $2 million increase over fiscal 23 or a 5.8% increase. If you look at the changes amongst these categories from fiscal 24 to fiscal 23, um, I think it does reflect some of the budget drivers at play that I just discussed. You see the largest increase from one year to the next year in that particular category is our, our salaries. Again, what's driving that is our contractual salary obligations, um, as well as our, our desire to, um, to, to fund some new positions. You do see some instructional expenses increasing. Certainly, we've, we've looked at those lines with principals and directors and tried to make necessary adjustments so they have the adequate supplies that they really need to, to fund their, the classroom materials, the textbooks, technology. And it's important, and there was a need to increase those lines this year, mostly because of inflationary increases that we've seen. Shipping costs, everything has kind of gone up, and we've seen some of those rises be significant, um, since, really since the pandemic. So those are reflected, and then the, the biggest other increase is the, the tuitions, does refer to the out-of-district tuition line item. Um, and we're seeing an increase in students, um, and that's, as well as coupled with the, the one-time rate increase. And that's, that's what we're, is being driven by that cost category. If you look at, uh, the next two slides, just different ways of looking at the budget and how the funds are being spent. Um, certainly instructional services, those are the funds that are directly impacting the classroom. Those are our classroom teachers, classroom materials, technology costs, anything that would be referred to by the Department of Education in the 2000s areas. That's, that's impacting classroom. Those is, those, should, that should always be the highest amount in a school, in a school budget, and it certainly is at over 77%. Technology is reflected in that category. You can see some of the other categories administratively, we're a little, we're just at about 3%. That's costs of sort of the, doing business, human resources, administrative costs, oversight. We are, the state average is closer to 4%, so we are below the state average in that category.
Mr. Connolly, just to call this out real quick, and that 3% includes the STEM coordinator position, which is being requested?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
The 9.6% of fixed operational and building costs, uh, I'm sorry, 9.4%. Certainly utilities, maintenance, grounds, snow removal, all those areas I talked about earlier. And then remainders make up certainly the tuition line item, which is about 6% this year, it's up from last year. And then student services, which reflects, um, health, nursing services, athletic, extracurricular, uh, areas of, of the budget is at 4.7%. When we look at how this area, certainly I mentioned earlier, salaries and compensation, 83%. The remaining 17%, I think this is kind of an interesting statistic, um, are made up of what I would refer to as kind of fixed cost. You know, increases that go up from year to year, like our contractual services, our utilities, our transportation costs, out-of-district costs. Those all add up to 13.8%. So when you look at the 83 and you add close to 14% on top of that, it really leaves only about 3% remaining for what I would refer to that are more kind of discretionary spending for materials, supplies, professional development. So when we look at funding a, a school department budget that, that's on the request on the table is greater than $37 million, the reality of the situation is, is there's a good amount of that money that's sort of fixed costs or contractually obligated costs. And the amount that's kind of discretionary is, is usually much smaller than that, which in this situation is 3%, which is around a million dollars for, um, for us. So these are the new staffing positions. We've, I certainly have talked about these in detail in the earlier presentations. Chairman Buckley mentioned earlier, the STEM coordinator position, that these are looked at by the administration as kind of funded in, in what would be the administrative's priority. We've made that clear in earlier presentations. The STEM coordinator, we believe, would certainly impact, um, teaching and learning greatly in our, in our P P S strategic plan, 2025 strategic plan. Um, and it is, it is an administrative position. It would assist school principals in providing support in the following areas. Curriculum, instruction, assessment, certainly assist with administration supervision and evaluation. We would also envision this position working very closely with curriculum teach, teacher leaders. And this position is mainly intended to be at the secondary level. It would certainly assist, um, the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, Mr. Colleen, who's here this evening, to certainly continue to meet our goals, educational goals and objectives. We feel this position could also assist in seeking grants, um, and applying for grants. There's a lot of grants out there that are available. Dr. Daly spent a lot of time, his own time this year with Mr. Colleen, pursuing grants that are out there. There are more grant opportunities out there since the pandemic, I believe. And we've been successful at many of those, and this position would, we believe, would help, would help also with that. The school adjustment counselor, so the vision here, um, we've been able to add to our school adjustment, um, counselors over the last number of years, partially through COVID funding, which you'll see in a moment, partially through, um, some, some of our funded positions last year. That was a top priority. Currently, we have school adjustment councils at the high school, um, designated adjustment counselor at the middle school. And we have a designated adjustment counselor at the bachelor elementary school, the largest of the three. And we have a shared adjustment counselor that is shared between the hood and the little. Our desire is to have a designated adjustment counselor, um, at every, every building, every school. This objective would achieve that, um, and certainly is a priority. School adjustment council are extremely impactful ones, certainly at the elementary level. This position not only allows for responsive services, but is key in developing programs that are proactive rather than reactive. It's essential in addressing social and emotional needs of all students, which we have seen continues to be heightened, certainly in large part due to the impact of what, of the COVID-19 pandemic. The next position, um, is a 1.5 FTE academic interventionist position. This is partially achieving N R P S 2025. We would like more ideally to have these interventionists on staff. Um, and this is an enhancement over our current model, which we were able to get funded over the last couple of years. They're currently part-time tutors. Again, not professional positions, but they're tutors that work at the elementary level and help address, um, needs, whether it be literacy or math, um, they're, they're there working at the elementary level. But we want to go enhance that model and have a professional licensed certified position ideally at each school. But this would achieve a designated interventionist to help supplement the tutoring that's happening at the elementary schools. And then it would achieve a part-time position at the middle school, which is also in very much need of one. I think the, the focus at the elementary level would predominantly be on math. And at the middle school level, this focus, if this position would be funded, would be on literacy in grade six through eight, all grades. So certainly, um, the impact would be significant. So all in all, this is 3.5 FTE positions that are being requested. This is new, this is above and beyond level services. And we'll get into that a little bit, um, at the end, what that means. $303,785 is the cost impact to the school department appropriation. And if you look at our 5.8, 0.8% request in terms of what's an increase over the current fiscal year, this is adding less than 1% of that, 0.85 of that 5.8% as a result of these new positions. We don't want to lose sight, um, of positions that are being funded on what we consider COVID-19-related funding grants, federal funding, known as ESR. These are, have been in existence since fiscal year 21, coming out of that pandemic year. This funding was great at one point. All in all, I think we're close, we got close to $2 million of funding when you go back to the beginning of the pandemic and a variety of sources that had to be used on a variety of different things. We are now on the final stages of this ESR federal funding, so that we had ESR one, we had ESR two, this is ESR three. And this is the final phase of funding. The funding is available through fiscal year 24, we're in fiscal 23, so this funding is available through next year. ESR three was a $450,000 grant to North Reading schools. We made a decision to use half this year and half next year. We're losing a little bit in kind of indirect kind of, uh, benefit costs there. And this is essentially what this grant has funded. And we believe these positions are essential. There are the adjustment councils that are already on staff, um, that I spoke of a little bit earlier. Some are funded by this grant, some have now been funded through the local budget. It's a digital learning technician, which is extremely important. When we went from a one-to-one environment, K through six to K through 12, I'm sorry, seven, seven through 12 to K through 12 at, during, dirt, coming out during the pandemic. When we went from a one-to-one environment K through six to K through twelve, I'm sorry, seven seven through twelve to K through twelve during coming out during the pandemic. Extremely increased our our Chromebooks, doubled the amount of devices we have on on in-house. This position is essential in keeping that program running, so that that's an important position to continue. And then certainly the Florida school nurse, which has been certainly very important since this pandemic, and we see a need for that. And we saw, we really did, we really, as we talked about before, saw a need for that position even pre-pandemic. I mean, we had been a position that had been in our strategic plan. So we don't want to lose sight, this is here to let you know this two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars is out there. At the end of next year, for us to continue to fund what we've been used to having since fiscal twenty-one, which would now be, at that time, would be four fiscal years. It's a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar issue that we got to deal with in the coming forward in the in in the future. When we look at our budget summary one more time, and getting close to the end, we'll open up to questions. Is again, we're at thirty-seven million seven sixty-eight two oh four, that was our recommended budget. We all know that there's a lot more that goes into what we request the the community support at town meeting. There's grants, both state, federal grants, there's revolving accounts. We would love not to have user fees, we would love not to have programs that we assess tuition for. But the reality of it is to maintain the the level of services and opportunities for students, both in the extracurricular, the finance, the athletics. Busing services, which is a community service. We believe fees have been necessary, and they've been necessary in this community for a long time. So those do exist, and that adds a little bit less than four million dollars to our total picture, which would put us a little over forty-one million dollars. And then in reality, that doesn't show everything, because we also have our donations that we accept on an ongoing basis throughout the fiscal year for school committee. Those help support technology costs, class field trips, enrichment programs, variety of of areas. By our support groups, by private donors, by local businesses. And then we have our PTO and PTAs, which may have a lot of have their own budgets to help support classroom materials that the budget can't quite support, helps support class field trips, speakers, and other enrichment programs that happen each and every day in the in the in the schools. Really quickly, I I've kind of gone over this a lot, but this is just intended to show you. Here are the programs we're assessing user fees or tuition costs for. The column in the in the second column is the direct costs around that program. The third column is what we are currently receiving in revenue. And again, we're required by law that that revenue received must fund work as an offset to to that this program. We can't take money received from busing and go support a classroom teacher. It has to offset the cost for that program. And this is currently based on where our revenue has been at, where the user fee is assessed, based on a a trend of our participation. This is the user fee contribution, and this is the amount of the percentages that it supports. Now, last meeting, we did increase the bus user fee for the first time since two thousand sixteen, that's now reflected here. We did, we do expect a modest increase to the revenue based on that, two fifty to about two seventy-five. But as you can see, in one time, based on just inflation and cost of living adjustments, variety of factors. The percentage of the user fee contribution has gone down, and the percentage of what we're asking the communities to support in a lot of ways has gone up. And that's just the reality of the situation. And we've talked about that in detail with the school committee and there's subcommittees that are doing a lot of work, looking at this and how how to find that balance between what's the appropriate user fee based on the cost. How do we institute a program that can help families that are struggling, that want to participate? But I have children that's are involved in a lot of these programs, so all these things are being talked about and looked at by the committee and by the administration. One of the things that's been talked about a lot, and it's been an initiative, is the full-day kindergarten. And there's certainly a bit of desire to to really offer universal free full-day kindergarten. The original proposal would have reduced that kindergarten tuition fee by half, three thousand to fifteen hundred. You'll see some of the challenges we have in terms of funding the budget, and there's been discussion that we would have to slow down that that plan. The current user fee is three thousand as reflected there, but we would we would like to ideally stick on our plan to reduce that that tuition costs. And I think NRPS twenty twenty-five is has a goal to be free by twenty twenty-five. So that's another area that we've talked about a lot. So here's where we stand. I've mentioned the number of where what our recommendation was, thirty-seven, seven sixty-eight, two oh four. The FY twenty-three budget appropriation is reflected, the increase again is a little over two million dollars or five point eight percent. The revenue plan, current most updated revenue plan. The current most updated revenue plan is thirty, would be a budget of thirty-seven million seven hundred and sixty-nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which would be a two point nine percent increase. The finance planning team, chairs and vice chairs have sort of agreed to use this use of one-time cash, which does add a kind of a dollar-for-dollar value or revenue to the school department budget, which would add four hundred thousand to that figure. So when you look at what we recommended, again, which is a little bit above level services, and what the current revenue plan would be with the use of some one-time free cash based on some identified areas in the budget, a little bit of an accounting, accounting adjustment there, would be a recommended budget gap of six hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So that's that's really the 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 current challenge that we've been certainly been involved with deliberations between the administrative team, the school committee, and looking for feedback to how to how to solve this this gap.
Mr. Connolly, if you don't mind, just to just to emphasize on this one slide here, quick. I mean, if you look at what we'd really like to do, not have fees, not have to use one-time funds and everything else. I mean, you talk about structural problems, I mean, we're about two and a half million dollars short of what we really need. Because even if you remove for the for the fees, if you remove the line talking about preschool, and even if you said preschool had to be paid for. Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand is being funded by by fees. We have S R funds of two hundred and thirteen thousand. You have four hundred thousand in in free cash, so the town's free cash is going to pay for one-time expenses, but some of them are one-time expenses that occur every year. And so not ideally what you want to be doing. And then we also, what you didn't call out also, was we agreed to put more interest revenue into the revenue plan this year. And so the last few years, we've had fifty thousand for interest, and interest rates are higher this year. So we agreed as the finance planning team to to increase that revenue number to two hundred and fifty thousand. So if you add up all of those funds and the fees, we're about two and a half million short of where we ideally want to be. So just to kind of emphasize the structural problem that you were talking about. I mean, if you were to be in an ideal ideal world, you wouldn't have any of these fees, you wouldn't have to use free cash to fund one-time expenses. And so you're probably around two and a half million dollars short, really, so.
And S R's running out no matter what.
Correct, S R's running out, interest rates aren't going to be as high as they are forever. There's there's a lot of challenges with with it, and so even, we're going to be saying how bad a six hundred thousand dollar gap is to close, but really, we're doing a lot of other things that ideally you wouldn't want to do, so.
And that we won't be able to do in the future.
Some of them, some of them, some of them, yes. But yeah, again, we could talk more about that, but just while we're talking about that gap, I mean, that's and and not to mention the fact that this isn't even all the other positions you'd like to have. This is the the modified level services budget we're talking about.
Right. So the school committee did have a workshop last Monday morning. We talked about some of these areas of what we could do to balance the the budget gap that I just presented, the six oh seven number. So some of these areas, we just have updated information now, based on the fact that we now have kindergarten numbers, and we now have some other information that we've received. So we now know that because of the the half-day kindergarten numbers, most likely, we only need one midday kindergarten run to transport the student students desiring half-day kindergarten. We had originally budgeted for two, so that's an unknown at the time the budget's put together. So this is a reduction that we feel is very safe to make, based on our known information, and that's what that cost is, and that's why that's reflected there. Looking at other lines and just some discretionary lines that that we feel we can make. What's in this thirty thousand dollars is all district-level costs, nothing that's impacting classroom materials, school budgets, technology. It's it's essentially looking at where there might be some costs for substitutes, some costs for, you know, separation, retirement-type costs, some food service maintenance costs that can be transferred transferred over to the school revolving account, school food service revolving account. Those types of areas, we've identified that at thirty thousand dollars of of savings. I talked earlier about the increase in bus user fee that would add additional revenue. So if we made that adjustment, that would shift, that would save twenty thousand dollars, or shift twenty thousand dollars from operating to the revolving fund. If we slowed down the full-day kindergarten tuition offset and had no fee reduction, which is what this proposal discusses, we would add, we would save fifty thousand dollars. That's that's conservative, but it's that would be something that we would be able to increase that the offset and in the revolving accounts for next year.
Mr. Connolly, just to clarify on this one, so this fifty thousand is assuming a twenty-five hundred dollar fee. We were originally saying one fifteen hundred, then it was twenty-five hundred, and this is this is fifty thousand plus twenty-five thousand from the reserve fund.
Correct.
Just keep it at three at three thousand.
Correct, yep. And then the next four items, it would just be now we're doing, not funding any of the the positions that I just spoke of in detail in terms of our NRPS twenty twenty-five. So now we're just trying to get to level services. Budget proposal, which would be the three hundred and three thousand and change of the new positions I spoke of earlier, which had added about point eight five percent to the budget. And then these areas, which were level services in the in the kind of the white shaded, which would if you add all these together, it's it's four hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And the remaining budget gap is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars and nine nine dollars. So certainly, I think I think it's clear, anything beyond this, it gets much more challenging and certainly gets more impactful. And that's that's kind of the the task at hand that's been a challenge that we've been talking about. It's why we certainly have members of our administrative team here, because we would be looking at programs, class sizes, those, everything that we've certainly fought hard to protect in North Reading over a number of years. Budget conclusions, this assumes the recommended budget conclusion, some of these would be impacted, but ideally, we we need to fund the budget that meets our contractual obligations, meets our fixed operational costs. We we've always prioritized sound student-teacher ratios and class sizes. Academic support systems have certainly been a priority, certainly since even heightened since the pandemic. But I've talked about those academic interventionist positions, I've talked about the the health and safety and the Florida school nurse that's in SR. Currently, the the social, emotional, and mental health needs and being proactive rather than reactive to a lot of these interventionists is certainly a priority. And then the curriculum leadership model with providing that that support to our curriculum instruction and assessment. Certainly, the STEM coordinator would be the first step in us achieving that, it's been part of the plan for many, many years. And then the importance of technology and continuing the one-to-one and supporting that program with technicians. And then obviously, we need to have the operational cost to maintain our buildings. So that that's really what we're concluding and looking to achieve through our budget. Here we are this evening, having the having the public hearing. There is a workshop scheduled for April twenty-sixth, I think ideally, we want to hear questions and feedback tonight. We know we have work to do after this evening. We're going to vote a budget somewhere between April twenty-fourth and May first, that's really what we have to do in terms of the timeline schedule. We'll present that budget to the finance committee when ready to do so, and town meeting is on June twelfth. So just I guess I'll open up to questions and comments.
So first, I mean, is there is there any are there any comments from anybody online or anything either? If anybody else has comments or questions, they're welcome to raise their hand. I would just, first, I would thank you, Mr. Connolly, I know this has been a tough year, and you're excellent in your presentation and how you balance this and give us all the accurate information. So we really appreciate that. The only thing that I'll just say is, I mean, we have a lot to do to try to cut, but to me, the number's not one ninety right now. I don't agree necessarily with the tuition offset change, and I don't necessarily agree with cutting the STEM coordinator. Those are two, those are two areas that I I think, as far as I'm looking at it, we're three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars short from being balanced right now. And before before I would feel comfortable saying that we're cutting either of those, I would want to see what else could possibly be cut. Because we've had a lot of discussion at different meetings about NRPS twenty twenty-five, those are both goals that are part of it. We said we want to support it, and so I don't think we can just, I don't think we can simply say we're going to cut those positions just because they're new positions before we look at other things and see if there's other things that could be cut instead of that, so. That's where I personally am right now, I think in the budget workshop, we need to look at what else is on the table. But I don't think the number we're workshopping to is one ninety, in my opinion, I think at least those two things we have to consider, so.
No, I agree with you, Scott. And just again, to clarify, the the no fee reduction, that that is, that number there is with no reduction. But hadn't we discussed just minimize, like doing a reduction but not doing as 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 a significant a reduction, what?
Right, so we've talked about twenty-five hundred is, you know, similar to what we did last year. We we had, we were thirty-five hundred dollars two years ago, we went to three thousand this year. And we would have liked to have gone as low as two thousand for this current year. We we ended up landing at three thousand, a five hundred dollar reduction again. So that's something we can talk about and look at. Again, it's, we're using some of the reserve this year because of the challenges that we're in. The ultimate plan would was to phase that down and use some of the reserve that we fortunately built up over time to not put any huge financial burden, in a sense, cost because of the because of the use of the reserve on one particular year. And we were trying to set it up so it's it's a hundred thousand dollar issue over three or four years, as opposed to a four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar issue in one particular year by trying to get to our goal. We would like not to have used as much of the reserve that we kind of had to change our budget to because of some of the revenue challenges that we're faced with. So we could certainly go to twenty-five hundred dollars and still keep that number as I presented it. It just, just so it's known, it just might put pressure on subsequent years as we as we approach and we try to continue to achieve that goal and that reduction. And, you know, the reality of the situation is, is North Reading is kind of in this position, unlike some other communities, just because chapter seventy formula just is not a one-size-fits-all. And I think it's important to understand that, because you can look around and you can say, why is some neighboring communities that have gone free full-day kindergarten? So, um, I think Wakefield, in the, Winfield, in this area. And I think when they made some of those changes, they did get an influx of chapter seventy dollars. Whether you're right, wrong, or indifferent, North Reading, because of where we stand in that formula, and because in the eyes of that formula, we're getting more money than that former or the state thinks we should, when we make a major change like that, which should lead to more revenue per pupil, per student. We got where we default to the minimum aid per pupil, which is generally set at around thirty dollars because of that scenario at play. And I think that's what not everyone understands and why it's why it's difficult to prepare community against community when you look at an area like this.
Real quick question, what is the number that's being used for the per pupil increase for next year right now in this?
Thirty dollars.
Okay, and is that the final number for the state, or is it still possible?
So that was the governor's number. The House has sometimes increased that number the last couple of years, they did do that to fifty-two or fifty-five, as high as sixty. I haven't heard any strong indication. I haven't heard any strong indication that that's going to happen. And I, I think I have talked to Michael Gubert about that, who I think he's been in touch with Brad Jones, who usually gets some good information on that. So we, it's possible, but we haven't heard that that might happen.
Okay, Dr. Daley?
I was just going to say, one thing that's not really discussed in this presentation because of the low impact here, when it's sort of the headline in other districts is the Student Opportunity Act, which was a reimagining of sorts of Chapter 70 funding. We are basically breaking even, we're getting exactly what we got before. Part of what we were hoping to get with that student opportunity funding that we still have to file reports on, we're matching grants in areas such as reducing, really it's to reduce free full-day pre-K. So we got permission to do free full-day K, because we're one of those districts that doesn't have that yet. It's been approved, but they did not approve any of the grants. Some of the grants specifically for that never came up, and the grants that we did apply for, we unfortunately didn't receive. So we were, we were hoping to maybe have some additional support to help reduce those costs, but that's not there this year. There is some work at the state level about the, the tuition fee, the OSD increase. We are hopeful that that will be done. I don't, I'm not optimistic at this point with the way it's written in the governor's budget that it will actually make an impact in North Reading. It seems to be like about a third of the districts in the state would receive support, and we're not likely to be among those, the way it's currently written.
Thank you.
Can I, all of a sudden, I'm confused on the tuition, on the full-day kindergarten tuition. So right now, it's three, this year, it was $3,000.
Correct.
In the original modified level services, we had reduced it, planned to reduce it to what, to what number?
$1,500.
To $1,500. And.
Changed the modified level services number, I think, at some point, to $2,500?
To $2,500, and now you're, and now this, as one of the items in the plan, you're saying we won't reduce the, the fee even 500.
Yes, we had added.
And that, and that actually costs $75,000. It's $50,000 here and $25,000.
But then you're taking some of the revolving, okay, then you're taking some of the revolving fund to offset some of that.
Correct.
Every, every thousand is about $150,000. So currently, it's about $450,000, rough numbers, I think, if I recall. So yeah, so it's really $75,000, and they're using $25,000 from the.
And what does the revolving fund stand at?
So revolving fund has done well. We, I think we're projected to end this fiscal year with over $400,000 in reserve. So this proposal means we would use pretty much a little bit more than half of that.
And, and just out of curiosity, if magically we were able to go to zero cost for full-day kindergarten, what happens to that revolving fund? Does it, can, can, for, does it like automatically be applied and then?
Yes, we would, we could spend it down until it's, it would be applied and then it wouldn't, wouldn't exist.
That year, or could you spread it out, or?
We could spread it out, as long as, as long as it's spent for.
Yep, okay.
Cost for the program.
Just for background, okay.
There is a question online.
Yeah, go ahead. You want to call it, I don't have it open.
Mr. Sussie?
Hi, I just have a question. I actually have two questions. The first one's in regards to staffing.
Can you state your name and address for the, for the record first?
Oh, I apologize, Nikki Toosey, Three Dogwood Lane. There's, there's a new RISE teacher at the hood that was just announced. Is that going to be in addition to the budget, or is that particular teacher just replacing
That's not, that's not an additional position.
Yeah, that, that was, that's replacing a current position that we have. Yep.
My second question is in regards to the, the driving cost. You had mentioned about solar panels. What would be the proposed cost to that, and how much research and data has already been collected?
So it's a good question. I was kind of referencing solar panels to highlight the fact that we have tried to look at all areas where we could either potentially generate more revenue, which is certainly a need, or potentially offset operational costs like utilities and so forth. So we've looked at solar panels in a variety of different ways. It's, the committee actually had a proposal last year, which was driven by some good work that Scott Buckley did with a, with a firm that had provided some proposals of providing roof panels and looking at to either use the energy or kind of lease our roof space to bring in some additional revenue. We have yet to find a proposal that we feel is sort of the best economical fit for North Reading, although it doesn't mean that we're not continuing to explore it. I, I think what we need to understand when we look at it is we are a municipal light plant district, so because we pull our energy and our, our electricity from with, through our partnership with RMLD, we are already receiving electricity costs that are discounted, much higher than, than sort of the residential or other rates outside of our light plant. We also have to kind of have that three-way partnership with RMLD, as well as any solar firm out there in the town, in the community. So sometimes it doesn't necessarily mean, it doesn't, the, the end result or the yield of savings isn't, isn't always significant because of that scenario.
Mr. Connelly, I can jump in real quick. So what we talked about last time with the, with the company was, well, it made no sense at all to use a, use a solar ourselves, because the amount we pay is less than it would have been. So the only one that would make any economic sense would be to sell the power to RMLD. We looked at putting batteries in place, and the total amount we would have received was, what, $50,000 or less?
I think it was even less, I think it was close to like.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and with, they might have got, pushed it to 30 if they were able to increase it, but it was in that range.
It was $25,000 to $30,000 a year and, and.
And locked in for 20.
Locked in for a long time, and we had, we had the head of the custodial department here talking about some of the concerns they had about if there was a leak in the roof, you know, how we would access that, and a lot of other damages that could be done to the actual roof here. And so at the end, the committee voted against doing it, because $25,000 to $30,000 a year wasn't worth the risk of it, and so.
To be clear, that's 25, $30,000 we're getting in, we're not paying out.
Correct, we're getting in. We would, we would receive about 25,000 to 30,000, but when you then look at some of the impacts on the roof and things like that, that was a concern. And so we put it on again this year to see if there's been any changes, and I know, Jeff, you've been working on that, so has there been any changes that you know of or?
Yeah, I've done, I've done a bit of research on it. There, there isn't anything that's so significant that would, that would cross the horizon for us to say, "Oh, that's, that's really something to go for." But yeah, it's, the, the whole purpose of this, and the question was asked, is how much would it cost us? The costs, initial outlay of costs, actually, we get money in, but there are costs to us when you look at maintenance, ongoing maintenance, and, and things we'd have to do in association with it. But it's not like we pay to put those things up. Anyway, I think, I think the points were made.
Yeah, yeah, and we looked, we looked at, you know, possibly putting, putting, you know, garage units or, you know.
Canopy.
Canopy units in, in the parking lots. So we did a lot of work on that last year, and it just, it was 25,000 to 30,000 at best case scenario, not taking into account the potential damages, so.
It's not something that made sense.
Yeah.
I do think it's worth mentioning that we weren't, we weren't down on the idea of it, doing it, looking into it again in the future, maybe not one year, but maybe five years down the road when technology improved or some other scenario comes to us that would be more appropriate. So I think we're all on board with the idea, but it just wasn't the right time.
Yeah, okay, good question, though. Other question?
Long answer to a short question.
We're good at that.
Yeah, I mean, and the only other thing that I would say is, I think in our budget workshop, we had a very good discussion. We've had a couple of very good discussions recently on fees. Last time in the budget workshop, we had a lot of good discussion. I think everybody, nobody likes having to make any cuts, and we certainly want to preserve the employees as best we can, and, you know, maybe it means a shift here or there, but it's just looking, I mean, when 83% of the budget is our positions, it's just hard. I mean, and just prioritizing one position versus a different position. And so, you know, I think, yeah, we, we want to be creative, but we also don't want to, we don't want to just say, "Let's just cut every reserve fund that we have, let's just cut every, you know, special allowance for, you know, maintenance or any of those budget items." And so it's, it's hard. It's a very hard position we're in, and so we'll do the best to weigh, weigh the impact. I mean, trying to prioritize students first and foremost, and go from there, but yeah, it's, it's a tough position to be in, so. Any other comments, thoughts, questions?
Any questions for Dr. Daley?
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, I just want to acknowledge, as you did earlier, the principals that are here today. We have Dr. O'Connell, Dr. McKay, Ms. Molly, Mr. Maloney, Mr. Colleen. I know that some of our other administrators were unable to be here, some are preparing to shepherd on a trip to Japan starting tomorrow. But we had a challenging meeting on, on Friday, because for many years, we've figured out a way to do this and to balance, a lot of that work is done by the administrators, a lot of it's done by the town, a lot of it's done by Michael, by finding ways to, you know, take on some of the buffers that are built into the budget so that he can sleep at night, quite honestly, and, and it's been trimmed away over the years. So this is a year where we're not, we're certainly not trimming the fat, we're certainly cutting into the bone, we're going to see, we're going to see some programs, some, some things that we've gotten used to as, as the community needing to go, when you're, when you're facing these kind of cuts we're talking about. Part of what we're trying to deliberate is like, what is our commitment to the vision? All of the things that are in our vision for NRPS 2025 are, are what's best for students. Some of them are very clear. I think we always try to protect class sizes, especially at core classrooms, keeping within our recommended limits of, you know, trying to stay, you know, contractually under 30, certainly, but we want to stay under 25, well under that as we get closer to the lower grades in elementary. We do have a minimum recommended of around 15, so we're trying to stay within that number. We also are trying to look at our models and try to, you know, make this as palatable as possible for everyone involved. Anything that we do this year that we make changes to are things that we would consider re-adding in the future. I think we're going to have a very difficult conversation next year when we've got four or five programs that are going to be impacted by the cuts in ESR, in addition to anything that we try to change this year. So I think we're, you know, my job and the committee's job, I think, is to start getting the information out to the community about some of these programs that we have, that we just cannot support and sustain moving forward unless we have additional funding sources, so.
Rich?
And I would just add to that, you know, I, I, I think we're all, we all, I think as a guiding principle, we wanted to do what's best for the kids. I think when you're faced with this type of budget year, you have to modify that and say, "You have to do what's best for as many, as most of the kids, or as many of the kids as you, as you can." And so when looking at potential program cuts, that's where those hard decisions really have to be made. It's like, you know, we can have this position and help a larger number of, of kids, and if we have to cut this class or this program and, and that is, has a smaller impact. I mean, those are tough decisions, but that's sort of the right sizing thing that we have to sort of figure out.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Buckley?
Having trouble hearing.
A little bit better. You're usually, you're usually not quiet, Julie.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I was just wondering what the, this is, the adjustment counselors.
With the what?
What the what is?
She cut out the exact point.
I was just wondering if there is a specific recommendation from Desi for a school adjustment?
Good question. I believe the American Association of Counselors, I don't know if the principal might know this better than I do, is there, ideally, they're, they would recommend somewhere in the ratio of like one guidance counselor for every 300 students, 200, 300 students. I think that my optimum would be 200. And I do know the Massachusetts, I actually read this in a magazine today, believe it or not, state average is about a little over 300 in the 350 range in terms of that ratio. But the, the stat that I've seen recently, and I know Mr. LaPreston, who's not here, has, has talked about it in our meetings, I believe it's ideally one, one for every 200 students, does that sound right? Yeah, I believe that's it, it's, it's between 200 and 300 students.
Yeah, we, we certainly, I mean, our principals would certainly see the value, and that's the reason why we've added them every year, to have one in every building. Right now, the high school has additional support. We're finding it very difficult to even find some of these positions, there's such a competition. So this is not a North Reading piece as well, it's something that's happening in, in every school. But certainly, having a shared person is better than not having them, but at the very least, we're having one per building. I don't know that there's a ratio the way there is with the guidance counselor with the nurses, but we're certainly holding towards at least having one per building.
Right, I was speaking to us, counselors, just a little bit different than adjustment counselors, just to be clear.
Any other questions?
Other questions, thoughts, Mr. Simon, if you want to?
Okay, I wouldn't mind hearing from maybe one of the principals about the impact of these new positions would be, what it's going to mean for the kids and why they're so important, if you wouldn't mind.
The positions that we've cut already?
Like exactly in this spot where I cannot see anybody's face.
So I'll happily speak to the addition of the school adjustment counselor at the elementary level. Currently, as you know, there is one at the Batchell School, Mrs. Molly at the Little School, and I share one as a .5 position each. That professional goes into classrooms, does a 30-minute lesson for each classroom, each grade-level classroom. That jam packs a schedule, and it makes it not able for us to carry forth those lessons into the actual everyday scenarios that we experience as a school. So something happens at lunch, something happens at recess, all those teachable moments are lost because of the lack of the carryover of that position. Happy to have it, happy that the teachers are physically present during those lessons, but the lack of carryover is a growth opportunity for us.
And I would add to that, too, the, with the Batchell School being fortunate to have that full-time school adjustment counselor, we have that carryover. So our school adjustment counselor is able to go into the cafeteria and use common language. She was actually, she wasn't here today, but she was planning a PD with, with our paraprofessionals about the language that they use in those SEL lessons, so that, you know, whole-body listening, for, for example, you know, it's something that they talk about in, in SEL, and then, you know, the paraprofessionals could, can follow up with that when they have interactions with students in, in the, out at recess, you know, whenever. So we have that luxury, and she's able to run, you know, lunch groups and, and respond to, you know, students who may be in crisis to also support our full-time school psychologist. So it's just, it's very responsive and it's proactive. The program is built to be proactive, and, and we are seeing the benefits, and I'm sure the hood in Little as well, but we are seeing the benefits, you know, of that program now.
Excellent. Thank you. I mean, as Dr. Daley said, it's, we're not cutting that this year, we're definitely cutting into the bone, the muscle, whatever you want to use on the analogy, but it's going to be hard, so. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I so move.
Second.
Motion to the second, a little in favor.
Aye.
Post unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and.
Thank you.
We will keep you posted. Diana did the second.
Yeah.
She beat me to it?
And louder, too.
She did. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Let's go back to the second reading of policy IMG first, and well, I'll just, I'll just say, we had it, I saw the one change we had made last time about the. I saw the one change we had made last time about the approval of the handlers. I saw that change was in there. I don't have anything else on it. So if somebody wants to maybe make a motion, then we'll see if there's any other comments on it. A motion to approve on a second reading, policy IMG.
I make a motion to approve on a second reading. My thing is upside down now.
Policy IMG.
I'll see IMG. I don't know what I just did.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, anything else that was not in here we need to adjust? Okay, all those in favor? Aye opposed. Unanimous. Thank you.
Buckley?
Yes.
I could just share. I, I've had additional discussions with the police department as well, and there is continued interest to possibly work with comfort talks in the police. So we, I'm glad that we did what we did and worked in the language to accommodate outside handler, employee handler, and also work with police because all three may be a possibility.
Great.
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 It is great.
Okay. I will turn it over to the evaluation subcommittee for discussion on the school committee self-evaluation. And I don't know if we're ready for it tonight, or if you want to just update and then we can do it at the next meeting, too.
Sure. Just brief update. I've gotten feedback from a couple of committee members. We still need a little bit more feedback. Wasn't going to name any names. Still need a little more feedback before we do a formal presentation. But I have, I have created a master feedback form. So when I do get more feedback in, it will all be incorporated. So I would expect by the next meeting, we should be fine.
Thank you very much. And I would say, when I looked at it, I think there's two different things. There's a general comment on how we evaluate, and then there's our goals at the bottom. I think the hardest part I had was trying to figure out, because we were putting initials on where we're at. I mean, if Diana has a goal, I don't know where she's at with it. So I think for the goals that are assigned to you, if you can at least particularly make sure you update.
Focus more on the things that, that you're working on or are assigned to you. And if you have any comments on the upper section, just put your initials. They, they already have last year's comments, so you have some reference point. Just add in your own and it will automatically track. I will see what you've done, so. I can track the rest of it.
Okay.
Jeff, I'll probably go back in, too.
That's fine.
Okay, so we can probably, we'll probably present the evaluation next.
It's, and again, for everybody, just send me what you've got. Don't worry about whether it's a shared workbook or anything else. Just send me what you've got. I will put it all back together.
Perfect. Thank you. And that will be before the election, though, in case there's any surprises. Okay, moving on. We have no minutes this time?
No minutes this time.
We have a budget update. And Mr. Connolly?
Yes, thank you. So in your packet this evening was the fiscal twenty twenty-three March budget report. Summarizes financial activity essentially through, through the end of March. Again, I think, you know, the drivers continue to be the same. We've certainly have experienced some unanticipated costs this year, certainly in the areas of special education, both in and out of district in terms, certainly to meet students' needs and so forth. We have seen some students move in to the district, requiring some services. We've been able to address these additional costs within the budget, mainly because of some of the measures we took at the end of fiscal year, as I've, as I've been saying, as we've moved through this, this fiscal year, because we did prepay tuitions last year that, we exceeded the amount that we had budgeted for that. So that's allowed us to be able to address this unforeseen cost without taking any additional measures or potentially looking at the stabilization fund that exists in the reserve fund. So we've been able to, to do that. There are certainly some small balances in some expense accounts as we are in the final quarter of the fiscal year. This is really the time of year that we're going to start looking at some of these balances that are in some, some of the accounts that you see reflected on the expense side of the equation. See where these balances can be repurposed and we'll, we'll look to have kind of a, a plan as we approach the final quarter. The payroll accounts are within budgeted amounts and we're going to continue to monitor any impact on leave of absences that have occurred, that occur every year that we've dealt with, certainly substitute costs. But everything is trending within budget and we've been able to handle a lot of the, the unforeseen costs this year. Food service program continues to perform really well. Certainly the assistance of the universal free meals that is being supplemented by the state has in large part resulted in over seventy percent of student participation on a daily basis. That's kind of our ADP, our average daily participation rate, almost across every level. So our revenue in that program is very, very strong and we've done, certainly done well. So overall, I think we've, we've had some unforeseen costs. We've had some maintenance areas pop up that always does in certain areas at certain schools that we've addressed. And I think we are in good financial standing to close the year. There will continue to be expenses that come up and you see the balance that's, we're projecting. But I think we're in good standing to take some of the measures that we have forecasted for next year in terms of prepayments and setting up reserve accounts that, to the level that we'll need to, to do so to meet, meet the budget that we've talked about this evening. And overall, we're in, we're in good, good solid standing. I'll ask any questions?
I have a few thoughts and questions. First, seventy percent is amazing for school participation in lunch. What was it before COVID? Less than fifty percent, correct?
It was between thirty-five and forty.
Wow.
More or closer to thirty-five percent.
If, if I, we, we all have our frustrations with chapter seventy funding and with the circuit breakers work and, and all of that. Have to give the state credit. They, they stepped up for these free meals last year, this year, and it looks like they're doing it again, maybe in perpetuity, which is just about the best, one of the best things they could possibly do for the kids in Massachusetts. I think it's great.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
And for the parents.
And for the parents and for the school, and for the school districts. But really, it's just such a huge benefit for, for children.
And do you know what? I mean, do you know what percentage are buying extra lunches? Because somehow I keep spending school bucks.
Don't have that number. I, I know it does happen. I, I don't think it's a large percentage. I'm not seeing a lot of the, the paid lunch revenue come in. It's mostly the, the subsidized, but it does happen.
So a couple of other thoughts. So what can that, those funds be used for? And this will be a general, this will be a specific question on the, on the school lunches, the lunch program, and then also more generally, but we prepay special education before. Is there anything else we should be thinking about trying to pay that could reduce the budget for next year? And then specifically for the revenue that's being brought in by the, by the school lunch program, can that offset any of the expenses for the coming year or?
Yeah, it's a very good question. So the law allows us to, we're limited to what we can spend for expenses that, for next year. So you're legally not supposed to use this year's funding in the operating budget to pay for next year's costs.
But you could reduce the request for a line if you don't need it because it was already funded, like, if there was, if there were fifty thousand dollars of computers you needed to buy and you bought them this year and then it reduced it from the need for next year, that would be allowable, correct?
You could theoretically.
That's just one theoretical.
Spend more, you could, okay.
You could spend some expenses this year so that then you don't have the need. You can't, you can't.
You can't carry it over to next year.
You can't carry it over, but you could theoretically.
Right.
Just try to be creative when we're talking about cutting.
No, it's a great question. The law does allow us to prepay tuitions. So generally.
I'm sorry, excuse me. But that's strictly, that is from whatever our overage is. I mean, our.
Correct.
Our, our surplus.
Correct.
And do you use all of the surplus to prepay tuition?
So generally, because we've taken the approach to use the majority of the surplus, not all of it, to prepay tuitions because it's certainly legal, legal and within the law and what we're able to do. And then we've fallen, we've, we've forecasted that and we've budgeted that. So now we have to meet about a hundred and fifty thousand to meet our obligation for fiscal twenty-four currently. Obviously, the amount that we're projecting on, on the budget report this evening is greater than that. And then we've looked at some other areas. We kind of put together a spending plan, mindful of what we're able to do within the law and, and where I think we're ready to open with the town in terms of how we would spend any remaining surplus. And we're really looking at, I just wanted to be clear, in, in total, based on our thirty-five million dollar budget, we're talking about an amount, you know, in the three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. We're talking about less than one percent of our overall allotment. And the prepaid tuition amount allows us to help the next year's deficit situation because we then, we then offset that, which, which what we're able to do. And then if we're able, and we've been fortunate the last few years, number of years, we've been able to exceed that, we exceed it. And then what that does is that, because there's always costs that come up in this area. It's one of the most difficult areas to predict of a school budget. That minimizes the fact that, that minimizes the chances of us having to go back to the town or anything and, and say, oh, we, we can't cover this line item because now we have that added flexibility. So if we can exceed the one fifty, we try to exceed it to, to the greatest extent possible. But then to your point, there are other areas that we feel like we may need. In some, in some cases, there is textbook adoptions, but honestly, that, that are needed, that it would be difficult to budget that. And we might, we might purchase, kind of plan ahead and purchase some of that when we need to do so and start, start utilizing some of that in the current fiscal year that we know is going to carry forward. And again, you've just got to be careful with some of that, but we, we do look at that and do some of that. We might prepay some of our white copy paper and our stock up is maybe the better word. So.
What about food services? What can those funds go to?
So that's a good question. So the food service certainly.
I, I know, I know things you can buy, like, you know, refrigerators.
Correct.
Can it be used at all for employees or?
So I will say, it's a highly regulated business. And you'll be shocked at how regulated when you, when you accept the money from federal state, the USDA program in the state. They come out and they audit and they regulate what you're spending for, and it's very strict in what you're able to do. So there is a threshold of what they refer to as what you can spend as an indirect cost. So generally, it has to be direct costs, certainly cost to deliver the program on a day-to-day basis. The staff, the food, the materials, anything that goes into, to, you know, paper products for the, for the program. Equipment upgrades, equipment maintenance, anything that's a direct cost is what you're ideally spending it for. Then there is a threshold of which you can, can offset indirect costs to the, that can be contributed back to the program. So I've seen districts might try to argue a cost of a custodian, for example, could be considered an indirect cost because they're cleaning each and every day after the cafeteria. So portions of a custodian could potentially be charged to the custodian account. I've seen it happen. They don't like it. When I've been in, I've been in places where they're doing that, they'll question that highly, but it's, it's been allowable. Some utility costs, for example, could be charged back to the food service program. So you can do some indirect costs there.
I was curious, if Dr. Daley serves a few meals, can we move the salary? Food servicer.
We did that during COVID. We were out there serving. One of the things you mentioned, I think is really important, is, is being transparent with the town about.
Yes.
Those extra experience, the changes in expenditures. I know, I don't, we don't, we have a great working relationship with the town, but it's important to know that municipalities do not have that flexibility in spending. If you don't spend a line item, I think, I think I'm right in what I say. If you don't spend a line item, that money goes into, into free cash.
Right.
And assuming there's a surplus or assuming the revenues match what the plan was. And that can lead to a lot of frustration in towns where on municipal side, they get really mad that the, that the school district has much more flexibility in general. So the relationship we have with the town of bringing all that is really.
Because we, we're basically a, a bottom line budget. We can spend to the, where there, there's in, in those categories, in those lines, they have to stick within those lines and we can look at it as the, an aggregate of our, our total, total amount.
Yeah, we should, we should have thanked the finance planning team and the select board also for revenue plan. One, last question on this is just, in years past, we've had, and it got earlier and earlier, budget freezes. You know, that was a Mr. Bernard thing quite often. And so you at least haven't told us about them? I mean, have we gotten away from budget freezes or?
So we, the last couple of years, we haven't instituted a, a hard budget freeze. We've, I will say, the expense budgets have gotten so tight that usually by the end of the first quarter of the year, end of September, beginning of October, eighty, eighty percent of their, of the budgets are, are spent. And then generally, when we enter December or January, we go into kind of what I would refer to as sort of a, and this is just our daily diligence and operation. We haven't even had a need to communicate it much. It's sort of a soft, soft freeze in a sense that they know that there, there's sort of always that checking collaboration. And then at this point in the year, we're, we're really looking at, if there are some purchase orders out there that are kind of what we would refer to as open POs for materials, we're closing those out and that, and looking at what, because that's really the funding that, the supply should be there now.
Yeah, I think there haven't been those unexpected early year pieces. I think it's everything he just said, though. The, there's not a lot to freeze because we're right, everything's accounted for. And also the management, I think, that the principals and directors do with their budgets is very good. It always has been. But I think that, so we haven't officially done that this year.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So many questions on this subject. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Any staffing update?
None at this time.
Bids and donations?
We have a couple here. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation in the amount of seven hundred and sixty dollars from the E Ethel Little Elementary School PTO to help fund the grade four and five field trip to the Boston Symphony.
We have a motion. We have a second by Noel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move that we, the committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from Stacy and Matthew DeCarlo to put towards the North Reading High School baseball program.
Second. I just.
We have a motion. I, I prefer it when it's somebody else.
Nope, nope. I just went, my brain went left. The building is back.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous? The only other thing I would say, and this is last, last time we accepted a very large donation of fifty thousand. Did you, were you able to reach out to that person about possibly coming in?
Yes. So they're, they're interested.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the, the timing of when we even would officially receive that would probably be later.
Okay.
But yes.
I have a, I actually have a follow-up question on that. Is that, that was for, was that was for high school sports in general?
Correct.
Correct? Is there any thought of having it directed direct towards some, some?
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
Something at the baseball fields, a bench or a home plate or something like that?
Yep. So.
Very nice bench.
It was, there was certainly more, there was baseball ties to that donation. Because the, the thought that we had and was certainly, we planned to discuss it in athletic subcommittee, is we, we did undergo sort of a baseball field, Kari Park upgrade through some outside funding and collaboration with some Diamond Club and so forth to replace the sod and replace the backstop with some protective netting. And we, we gave the field a much more professional look and experience that it, it. And the, the second part of that, which we didn't have the funding for, would be to replace kind of the bleachers and the viewing ship. So the part of the protective netting that was installed and completed was to really improve the, just the viewing, the viewing ability by the spectators. So the pouring some concrete pads and replacing some of the bleachers behind the protective netting is sort of the, the next desired area to go. So I think that would be one potential area that we would want to spend these funds on. I think that would have the support of sort of the Diamond Club, members of the baseball team. We have to discuss it with the athletic subcommittee and bring it forward, but that's certainly an idea. And then we would certainly want to memorialize the donation with sort of a, a bench or something, you know, seating or something to that effect, absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. No grants at this time. Subcommittee update. We have finance planning team. I think we've thoroughly gone over what we worked on. And the big thing was just the.
The big change was the interest.
The interest. And, and I, the only thing I'll say on that one also is there was more interest in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. interest in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think there's, the finance planning team has not always been in agreement on exactly how to handle things like interest, because it changes year over year. Some of it is for funds that are being set aside that could be used on bigger future projects, whether it's a sewer project, or, you know, a firehouse or fire station or something else. And so I think for this year, we've brought it up and got it in late. We also have one-time funds where if we had if we had projected more revenue from interest, that would have gone through the revenue plans, and then you don't have the need necessarily to ask for free cash. So you probably don't want to do both in the same year. You don't want to put interest all the way at the highest amount and use free, you know, free cash for one-time funds in the same year. But I think that's a discussion we've had. And then the other discussion is, we started talking more about when do we need an override in order to
Yeah.
fix some of the structural problems. And you necessarily want to derail the hearing today, but it's a discussion we started having about, you know, and and some will depend on what happens with the sewer project, but I think outside of that, either way, there's a structural issue, and we need to eventually address it head on. And so I think that there'll be some discussions of the finance planning team about that in the future.
And the only other thing, not to beat the interest to death, but when we come back together and we see where the town's budget stands, and we look at where our budget stands, that interest number may be revisited as a way to help close that gap. And we'll see how how bad the situation is after we've all sharpened our fences.
Before anybody's laid off, we've all agreed to at least come back to the table and talk about where we're at. Okay. Upcoming subcommittee, finance planning team, we're meeting again April fourteen. So this week at eight AM, athletic subcommittee meeting May twenty-fourth at noon, finance subcommittee meets the same day at three fifteen PM.
Twenty-third, yeah. Athletic is on twenty-third, yeah.
Oh, athletics on the twenty-third?
Yep, I will fix that.
And it's fine arts on the twenty-third or twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
CIPC is Thursday.
CIPC is what?
Thursday.
How close are we, guys? Are we
This should be final. This should be the finalization.
Okay, we're we're judging you your whole first year on the school committee based on how we do on CIPC, so.
I'd prefer a different measure.
Uh, Dr. Daly, administrative report?
I'd just say, would you like me to add CIPC? Because in the past, when I had it, I was told not to have it, but should I put it on there? Because Jeff
Well, it's about to end, so it sort of doesn't Next year, maybe. Sure.
You're on it for three years, right? I think you are for your term.
Yeah, the term is three years, yeah.
Unless we change it. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
My my updates really were covered by the student rep. I was going to talk about beautiful burnout
Okay.
Mike and some of the other pieces.
For correspondence, the only question I have on correspondence, as none at this time, is, did you receive how much feedback? How many parents did you hear from about the bus fee increase?
Personally?
Maybe it will
Professionally.
The last time I'd heard, there was just one parent had reached out.
I've only I've only heard from one.
Okay. Michael?
The correct, I've
Okay.
Same, yeah, same.
Just curious, I mean, because, yeah, we hadn't increased fees in a long time. It's it's nice to hear if there's feedback. And we know that you we increase the fee and you get the feedback.
Right.
So just want to make sure we hear what you're hearing on that.
I will say, the in the the amount of enrollment to date is trending at the same level as a year ago.
Okay. Future business. So there's a proposal to change the next meeting to Wednesday, April twenty-six. That would allow us to do it after the budget workshop, where we will have the finance planning team on Friday. We'll be able to, and then there's a vacation week, and then we'll be able to get back and do that. So does that work for everybody? Going to Wednesday, the twenty-six instead of Monday?
Yes, and no.
Hopefully, we have a majority. I mean, I
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I think the problem would be having the vote before we have the budget workshop.
No, I agree.
It doesn't make sense. And then otherwise, we're doing an additional meeting, and so
Right. Coming off the vacation might be difficult if we need to some time to
Yeah.
Yeah.
So budget workshop will be three PM, I think it's needed, I think we can say. And then
Yeah, six, three PM.
Six thirty PM.
This one was in the afternoon.
It was, okay. I had it right.
Well, if the other thing, do we want to consider doing it even later so that it runs right into the meeting, rather than doing it three o'clock and then coming back at six thirty? We we can get back, but we'll we'll plan on having the budget workshop the same day as the as the meeting. We'll
Okay.
tell everybody and post it in advance. The May eighth will be at the bachelor of the school. May twenty-second will be at the little school. June twelfth will be CPAC here. June twelve will also be, and that'll be before town meeting. So we're meeting at five o'clock before the town meeting, and we'll go over to town meeting. And the May eighth one will also be the reorganization meeting, because there will be an election before then. And that's it. Nothing else. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.